Welcome to the March 26, 2024 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Missions, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for this opportunity for us to come together, Lord, and I ask that you guide us with your wisdom, Lord. Help us to seek solutions, Lord, in efficiencies and stewardship for our city, for our citizens, and to lead our government, Lord, to operate with the citizen's best interest always. Lord, I just ask you to watch over us, watch over all of our families, Lord. I ask you to cast evil spirits out of this room, Lord, and, Lord, I ask you to ultimately just guide us, convict us, Lord. Lord, this is an important week to remember the sacrifice that your Son made for us, Lord, and we just thank you so much for the sacrifice of Jesus Christ so that our sins could be forgiven. In your name I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a bid opening. Appalachian Power Company easement at 3405 Oddfellows Road. The first item is the Appalachian Power Company easement at 3405 Oddfellows Road. Ms. Finney, how many bids have been received?
Madam Mayor, as a result of an advertisement placed in the news in advance on February 29th, then again on March 8th, one bid was received on March 20th from Appalachian Power Company.
Okay, please read the bid.
I have a letter of commitment. It reads, "Please accept this letter of commitment on behalf of Appalachian Power Company as a bid being submitted pursuant to the invitation for bids and public hearing advertisement published in the news in advance regarding the grant and conveyance of a right of way in easement upon City of Lynchburg-owned property located at 3405 Oddfellows Drive, Lynchburg, Virginia 24501. An original executed acceptance page of the proposed ordinance authorizing the grant and conveyance of such right of way in easement accompanies this letter of commitment." This is from Jake Patrick, Senior Right-of-Way Agent.
Are there any additional bids being offered? If there are no additional bids, I declare this bidding closed as there are motion to accept the sole bid.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, may I speak to your motion?
No.
Can I tell it? No? Okay, we can go ahead and cast our votes. Do you want to do a voice vote or are we going to use our iPads?
All are present and voting, so I can push the vote through.
Okay. Mine didn't come up.
Okay, I'll reset the vote.
This came up, but can I ask you a question? So we don't have any item on here regarding the bid, so this opening, that there's no paperwork or anything on here.
There's a public hearing being scheduled for the same meeting tonight, so your paperwork is on that item.
So what are we voting on now?
The acceptance of the sole bid.
Okay.
And to hold a public hearing at 7:00.
So I mean, I think that's the thing, is that we're accepting a bid and holding a public hearing tonight?
That's correct.
Is that the motion that was made or is it just a motion to accept the bid?
That is correct, to hold the public hearing.
So I think that needs to be stated, that it's also holding the public hearing.
And I'll jump in just for a moment. This is a procedural component that City Council typically handles as part of its work sessions. Given that the work session was not held and we had the joint meeting instead, we went by the language that was in the advertisement to have it as soon as we could before this meeting. So really, all the motion is, is to accept the bid. The public hearing will be heard either way at 7:00 PM, so it's just to accept the bid for procedural purposes.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Alicia, mine is still not coming up online, so I can just do a voice vote if you want.
I'm happy to call for the voice vote. The voice vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. A public hearing will be conducted tonight to hear from the members of the public regarding the adoption of an ordinance granting the easement to this successful bidder. Now we will do recognition for National Community Development Week. Ms. Gabrielle Bateman with our Community Development Department is in attendance to accept this proclamation. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since 1974 to provide local governments with the resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons, and whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program is among the few remaining federal programs available to address the needs of low and moderate income persons in small cities, and whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided the City of Lynchburg with important and flexible assistance to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents by funding sewer, water, and street improvements, projects, economic development projects, public service projects, and other public improvement projects, and whereas Congress and the nation acknowledge the critical value of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the significant projects that rely on its funds for support, and whereas over the past 50 years, our community has received a total of approximately $45,797,000 in Community Development Block Grant entitlement funds and has funded hundreds of projects that have benefited our citizens and neighborhoods, and whereas the week of April 1st through 5th, 2024, has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the Community Development Block Program. Now therefore, I, Stephanie T. Reed, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1st through 5th, 2024 as Community Development Week in Lynchburg and ask all citizens to recognize the ways community development helps improve the quality in your community. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. And here you go, if you want to come grab this, and I think you have some remarks for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Community Development Block Grant entitlement and program income funds have been utilized over the past 50 years in a number of projects, including the construction of the downtown firehouse, construction and rehabilitation of the six neighborhood centers, the weatherization program at Lynchburg Community Action Group, spotlight and rental rehabilitation programs at Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority, implementation of the Neighborhood Initiatives Program, which is now Code Enforcement, rehabilitation of the building that the children's museum occupies, supporting the operations at the Jubilee Family Development Center, Miriam's House, the Gateway, YWCA of Central Virginia, and Legacy Museum of African-American History, and the Fifth Street Master Plan and Infrastructure. Most recently, these funds have been used in the Timbridge Hill Neighborhood Improvements, the Jefferson Park Improvements, the land acquisition for the new police department headquarters, the Diamond Hill Neighborhood Improvements, the Coordinated Homeless Intake and Access, or CHIA, for the homeless population, and the Neighborhood Center Program with the Boy Scouts of America. There are so many more projects and agencies that have benefited from CDBG funds. The Grants Administration Office has a list of each project that has been funded since the city began receiving entitlement funds available in our office. The Grants Administration looks forward to the many future projects that the CDBG funds will continue to help facilitate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[543.66][543.66](Applause). Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Are you at a second? Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just one thing on approving these minutes on page 21. I would like to change everywhere it says Senator, which it says three times, that should say Congressman.
Okay, does everyone agree with that? Okay. So noted that we will change the word Senator to Congressman with that consensus?
Page 21.
I can call for the voice vote.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. The next section is public hearings. The section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. We'll now have a consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing an easement to Appalachian Power Company at 3405 Oddfellows Road. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Clay Simmons.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Madam Mayor, you pretty much said it all already, so this was brought to council previously February 27th as a business information briefing. This is simply the creation of an easement covering the primary power going into the new police department site. It's a requirement of the project. We got to have power, so this is kind of a have-to-do thing, I'm afraid, and with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that may come up.
Wonderful, thank you. We will call you back up if we have any.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any voicemails?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nope.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
All right. The next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration to encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions. Applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before City Council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We have had several people that signed up actually cancel, so I would like council and any citizens that are following along to note that James Citi, Casey Crabbe, Christopher Glover, and Randy Dunn will not be speaking tonight, if everybody wants to take and make note of that. So we will start with hearing from a citizen regarding the funding for restorative practices in Lynchburg City Schools, Mr. Philip Stumpf. Okay, he's not here. We will hear from a citizen regarding the fight and what we need to do about it, Mr. Robert Flood. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Madam Mayor and councilmen, my name is Robert Flood. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and the Vice Mayor of the NWACP. Tonight, I'm addressing a very sensitive issue about who is to blame for the fight that happened at Heritage High School. This is a problem all over the country, so when something like this happened, some of y'all think it's time to force the superintendent to resign. Playing politics, that's basically what it is. We are standing with Dr. Edwards, and two of the reasons why I am standing for Dr. Edwards, one of the reasons is because she can't do the job by herself, and the other reason is because she's a strong black woman. Some of y'all, like Vice Mayor, Mr., y'all don't know what a black woman has been through in their lives and what they are continuing to go through, and people like y'all, you know, if you can't say nothing good, why say something at all? Now, I would say this, we can stop the blaming, because we can start at the family's home and go all the way down, principal, assistant principal, or whoever. If we always said that every time a kid get to fighting all over the country, we don't force the superintendents to resign, that's playing politics, and y'all know that. But, or we can blame, how about the parents, like we always blame? You know, that's how, they're not at the school, but they can stop the fight. Or let's blame the vice principal, let's blame the principal. Or no, let's leave them alone, let's go to the superintendent, because it's election time, okay? We want to force her off for whatever reason, who knows? You know, we have these problems each and every day, and we know the problems, but we need to talk about the solutions. We can come together and we can at least talk about what we can do, because you're not going to stop these young people from fighting. I don't care who you are or where you are, all over the country, Lynchburg, they get a fight at Heritage High School every day, but it's not reported. So who are you supposed to blame? You cut funds from the Lynchburg City Schools when you might could have hired somebody to walk the halls with the SORs to make it a little safer for the teachers and the students. Think about that. We have to work together. We got to stop this blaming and think about what he just said, okay? God do not like ugly. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That is loud.
First time we've heard that. Okay. Well, now hear from a citizen regarding the importance of public education, Mr. Michael Bremer.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Michael Bremer. I reside in Ward 4. Public education may not be a public good by the definitions of traditional economic theory, but public education is clearly good for the public. Public education benefits all of us in our community, regardless of whether or not an individual has a child in the system. Having taught in Lynchburg for 24 years, I encounter doctors, accountants, astronauts, and even educators who are the products of public schools. I see graduates who are scientists, authors, and entrepreneurs. I meet publicly trained x-ray technicians, chefs, builders, mechanics, and firefighters, store clerks, truck drivers, dog groomers, and internet technicians. Publicly educated people are found in every occupation benefiting the rest of society by providing valuable services and managing businesses that provide local jobs. And public schools accept all comers regardless of income, family structure, or zip code. For the first time in my memory, funding for public education is not the largest category in the budget you are contemplating. Suppose this council refuses to provide the resources required by our city schools. In that case, you will have asserted that other services are more valuable than the teachers and support staff who toil in our schools. Public school employees suffer from the very same conditions that this council has worked hard to remedy: pay compression, insupportable vacancies, mental fatigue, overtime stress, although I have to note, teachers don't get paid overtime, and high attrition rates. By hampering the opportunity for quality education to all in Lynchburg who desire it, you may be depriving our community of the next entrepreneur who grows a business hiring local talent, or the next detective who becomes a lawyer or a judge, or the next nurse who cares for your aging parent or even yourself, or the next social worker supporting another generation of children. Support for our local schools enhances the valuable work of our police, firefighters, and emergency medical services in maintaining the community we all desire. Indeed, children who cannot read on grade level are statistically more likely to be involved in criminal activity and/or dependent on government assistance. As you continue your discussions on the proposed budget, please consider the long-term value of public education. I challenge you to acknowledge the contribution of those who are products of our schools and have vision and optimism for the future of our students. Please fully fund the reasonable requests from LCS and finance our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding the failure of the school board and administration for the upcoming budget, Nettie Webb.
Hi, and I'm representing a group, Save Our Schools. I think we can all agree that teachers are vital to Lynchburg's success. Public education is at the foundation of a flourishing city. I'm here to ask you to increase the funding for Lynchburg City Schools. These teachers deserve respect. Transparency is respect. Honesty is respect. A plan is respect. LCS has known for months that they need to make cuts before 2024 to 2025. However, instead of being honest that teachers might be cut, they've promised that won't happen. On September 19th, Superintendent Edwards stated in the working session, quote, "I'm not trying to fire anybody. I want to keep my entire staff, and I think our children deserve the great teachers that we have here. I want to keep them employed." She followed that meeting with an interview with WSET, saying, quote, "The community's voices are important, and really, as we move forward, whatever that next step is after City Council, we want to do that with the parents and with the families and staff, hand in hand." Dr. Gupta then gave an interview stating Edwards assured him she would be talking to all teachers going forward before anything was implemented. Have they worked through this hand in hand with teachers? Have they even talked to the teachers? No. Last week, Principal Womack explained why there were so many resignations. Quote, "There is no trust. If you want our trust, involve us in the conversation." He continues by responding to the foreclosure of Sandusky in 2024 being added without notice. Quote, "If that's going to be on there, and you're dedicated to the staffs, why haven't you been in the building? Why haven't you asked our staff, how are they? Why haven't you come here? That is not respect." In November, the superintendent was informed she would get level funding for the district. That only happens if there are major cuts, not just from removing CARES positions or cutting healthcare costs, but by cutting teacher positions, and more than that, they said during the joint session. Because let's break down the numbers. Admin says that they'll save $3.2 million from cutting and removing TC Miller and Sandusky. Well, 2.5 million of that is from TC Miller. It does not take $2.5 million to run the facilities of TC Miller. That comes from the fact that they have untenured teachers who they're planning on removing those positions. The $700,000 from Sandusky comes from the fact that they have more tenured teachers, but they're still cutting those positions. So that's more positions on top of the 26 that they're already cutting, plus the Virtual Academy, plus 25 other positions. It is not as simple as 26 teachers. They then also added the line, $5.2 million, cut from school-wide expenses. However, on the presentation that they just gave you during the joint session, that number only totaled to $3.08 million. Where is the other 1.92? Where are those cuts? Who are those jobs, and who's losing their opportunity and not able to prepare for their future? For the school-level reductions, they don't know what they're doing there, and they have no plan, just like they haven't had a plan. There's no transparency, again, and no respect. Now, you have an exodus of teachers, especially younger teachers, because they don't know if they will have a job. I mean, how could they? Last year's contracts, as you said, didn't go out until July, and this is not new, this is not because of the budget being delayed from the state. This has happened at least the past seven years, and we know this. This is different from the counties who go out late April to early May. This is why you're losing teachers, over 30 positions every year, going to the counties. Since 20... This isn't just the administration, though. We need investment in public education. Since 2019, the city revenue has increased 16%. What has happened to the allocation of funds to public education? A 6% decrease. Now, this $43.7 million that they're asking for would still only be a 3% decrease. It's not even to the level funding that you provided in 2019. Throughout this city, LCS has blamed the council for the lack of funding. The council has blamed LCS for mismanagement of funds, and you all have been too busy focusing on each other and blaming each other that the most important thing has been forgotten: Lynchburg's children. For Lynchburg to grow and to develop and to be an example for others, we need a strong public education system. Not providing more funding to LCS will hurt our students, community, and city success. Remember, this budget does not also include any of the repairs or improvements that need to be made to our buildings. It doesn't include investment in the high-quality education that they talked about today. The board had to say that they weren't going to develop more CTE earlier this fall because they didn't have the funds. How is this producing a quality education system? This is something you invest in. Councilmember Wilder pointed out, we are an urban school district. 70% of our students, the majority, are coming from at-risk communities. They have more services that need to be provided. We need to increase literacy rates, and that only happens by increasing funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $76,950,000 of general obligation public improvement refunding bond Series 2024 and introducing a resolution authorizing appropriations for issuance costs. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings on March 12th, 2024. May I have a motion on the resolutions? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
So moved.
Okay. Have a second?
Sir.
Okay. May I speak to it?
I do, and I believe your summary speaks to it all. I do want to highlight and thank staff for how they've structured this. It does result in approximately $6.6 million in net savings for the life of the bond, so I do appreciate that, and that might afford us in the future, and I'm looking forward to us making the right choices on future projects. Thank you.
Do I speak to it?
Agreed.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you. You know, what's interesting is we look back in hindsight. I think Ms. Witt told us in our, just the short presentation, that 10 years ago, when this money was spent on a brand-new Heritage High School, I know several folks on City Council said, "Oh, let's build it a couple years sooner than needed," because interest rates are so low. This is a bond refunding. How bond refunding means interest rates have dropped, and dropped, and dropped, and dropped, so much so that you can actually reissue bonds, you can actually pay all the new legal costs and all the underwriting fees, and still come out ahead. You know, 10 years ago, when, I remember, one council member in particular said, "Oh, let's do it now," and I remember it at the time thought what Thomas Jefferson so wisely said, as he said, "Never buy anything just because it's on sale." And with that, at the time, we could have had another couple years' worth of life. Interest rates would have dropped tremendously like it did. I'm thankful that Ms. Witt and the finance staff were able to look at this and recognize that we could actually still have a net present value savings by reissuing them now, but over these last 10 years, we've been spending a lot more in interest than we needed to. If we would have just done the school construction according to the plan, as opposed to letting the tail wag the dog, so to speak. I'm voting in favor of this now because I'm thankful. I'm voting in favor of this now because I'm thankful for it, but I did want to give just a little bit of, because back 10 years ago, or 11 years ago when it was first issued, I remember hearing those arguments. And sometimes it takes a while. But those 10 years later came and said, you know, we should have waited, because the proof is in the pudding now. I'm thankful that we can do the refunding now and be voting in favor of it. So thank you.
Comments or discussion for any of us? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Higglison?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the city of Lynchburg's flag display resolution. This item was presented to council during our business item.
It was for the issue of cost as well?
Yes. I stated that in my, well, I'm sorry, it wasn't my motion, it was someone else's motion.
That's how I understood it, Madam Mayor. We do need a second vote, I'm sure we could take it, but if we're good, we're good, I think.
It's a second?
No, it's.
By the spirit.
Was there two separate resolutions?
There are two separate resolutions.
You probably, just to be safe, I mean, I just.
Yeah, sorry, I was saying the same thing, just to hear quietly.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd just recommend that you call, I'll make a motion to approve the second resolution, but I just recommend you just do it all, once all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
So the second, for his second resolution.
You go ahead and make it.
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. We're good. All right, now we're good.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, now, we move on to, this item was presented to council during our business item briefings on March 12th for the city of Lynchburg's flag display resolution. Do I have a motion?
Sumo.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
It's pretty self-explanatory. This is something that we've just uncovered, and we've gone over it, but to the public is something we've gone over and found that the city doesn't actually have a standard operating procedure for how to fly our flags. Flags are actually highly regulated entities, and how they're presented, displayed, housed, handled, and saw this as an opportunity to standardize some of those procedures. And also, it's an opportunity, I think, for the city to show what we are, Americans, Virginians, and residents of the city of Lynchburg, and then, of course, the various departments or other flags that are itemized in the resolution, which are the, any flag of the armed forces, National League of Families, POW, or MIA, the freedom flag from September 11th, the city flag, flags from city departments, and/or other flags that are permitted under federal or Virginia law. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Taylor, would you second it? Yeah.
I lean more towards the American flag, but I agree with the state flag and city flag.
All right, any further discussion? Questions? Okay, great, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Higglison?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay, closed session. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds connected to a proposed energy storage system, citing agreements with a private party where bargaining is involved, and where, if made public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected, and to receive legal advice in connection with the same pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711A6 and 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
Sumo.
Do I have a second? Okay. Do we have a vote?
Just all in favor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Higglison?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.